Announcements, the town offices will be closed on July fourth to observe Independence Day. Item A, public comment. None. So what do you think? Should we go in more or?
We can start. Yeah, we can just film it.
Okay, so I'd like to take item F. A, on order. This is the receipt of the groundwater townwide study from Weston and Sampson. We have the water superintendent and two of the commissioners here to join us. So how do you want to do this? I guess just. Do you want to just have a discussion?
I think so. Yeah, it's just acknowledging the receipt of the report. As you know, the key findings were. Shared prior to town meetings to inform the proposal that was made to the voters to appropriate funds for. Testing of one or more sites. So the basis of that is to report the chat in front of you. So but we just received a complete report in the last. Ten days or so, and so it's just been shared. And this is the first public area of the report. So I think it's really just on as a general discussion item.
Yeah, so this will this be put on the website?
It is. It's posted to the site under the select board package. It's not posted in a other logical place like. You know, select board page or we can set up a projects page for water generally, but right now it's just posted on a select little packets.
Okay. As a supplemental?
Yeah. Yeah, so it is a standalone document.
Okay. All right, then I'll entertain any comments, questions from any of them.
I have a few questions. Is it is it fair to say or fair to expect? That Weston and Sampson is going to proceed with it? Geophysical survey of one of the. One or more of the preferred sites?
Yeah, so that we did receive a proposal from them to proceed with the number one site.
Okay.
And the first part of that is the sidewalk that we wanted to invite you to also participate in. So that was one of the things we wanted to do tonight is send you for that or get some possible dates.
Okay. So can I just kind of go through a lot of your list of points, criticisms or critiques, but points about the report that I'd like to share? Maybe there's some feedback to.
Sure.
So. I I see that there were. Ten or so sites that were selected based on. Geo- geophysical GIS USGS data and and the premises, you know, where there where there's going to be a. Shallow well or well field opportunities. And not bedrock, which had previously.
But there are a bunch of other criteria besides.
I I understand that, but the target place, the target places are looked for, you know, shallow. Potentially productive sources.
Yeah.
And. And so. I I do. So so one kind of broad thing is I do understand that. You know, Weston and Sampson are professionals and they they looked at our data and they looked at other sources of data in order to come up with their decisions. I I intend at the next Water Walk Commissioners Meeting to suggest that. That our our previous geophysical firm, the firm that has worked historically for the last several decades for the town, specifically the water environment. Mar, D L Mar, I think it's D L Mar, to take a look at that report. And see if from from their perspective, anything has been overlooked or anything is big missing. With the with the intent that it's it's the best peer review that we could afford to do in a prudent way. And I'll also will add the and will ask the the water commissioners if we can ask the selectmen to pay for that peer review rather than the water commissioners. To do that. And so that's just one thing I would like to get out there just because I I don't doubt their outcome. But we have an opportunity to 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 find things that if they are missing or have been over or under. Evaluated just from a different perspective from someone. From someone that really would be very knowledgeable of the town geology. So that's what.
Yes, I would just say with all due respect, they've been around for a long time and we still don't have a viable well, so.
Well, I understand that, however, you know, for the last. Forty years. We haven't looked for shallow aquifers. We've looked for bedrock wells, you know, that that's been their focus. At once upon a time back in the eighties, I think it was. You know, Mar was asked to look for for. Deposits and and ironically, one of the deposits that. Is being recommended is a deposit where D L Mar investigated and didn't find anything. So, you know. And that's just something I think would be prudent to do. You know, if the select board chose not to do that, well, maybe the water commissioners would choose to, you know, build to to have a. You know, D L Mar covered it and do a review on their own. But I just think is is this is being a part of the project. You know, of looking for water that, you know, this truly is part of, you know, the the review. It's a peer review, but it's still part of the review. I mean, the select board review, the water commissioners review, there is this other entity that the town. Has available that can do this to really reinforce what Weston Sampson, you know, may have come up with. So that's an idea I want to throw out there.
Do we want to comment on on the idea that select board will take a peer review of a study?
Well, I guess I, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is. I was under the impression that D L Mar is now owned by Weston and Sampson.
Yeah.
And.
Believe it or two marks, there are two marks, there are two mark companies, not D L Mar, there's. Yeah, our guy would love the more, I mean, he'd be happy to, all right, I'm sorry, I'm confused. There are two mark companies. They used to be brothers, cousins, or something like that. They split. Weston and Sampson only one half of that, the people that we use is the other.
Is the other, okay.
Well, I I thought that Kevin said that he was contacting the people that got his application and had done all the original work.
I don't know if you talked to him or not.
But if he did, it isn't in the report. There isn't a reference to that going back to those.
Yeah. Yeah, I I personally don't feel like that's appropriate. If if the water commissioners want to have a peer review and pay for it, I mean, when the select board did a peer review of. Taven and Howard's report, we paid for that. We didn't ask the water commissioners to pay for it. You know, I.
Yeah, no, I I I think I agree with you there. But but I'm still puzzled what the relationship is then between the two. I thought. I was on. I I was listening. Just on the listening side of the conversation you had with, what's the name of the guy from? From Mar.
Ryder.
Ryder, that's it. That's right, correct, I don't want to say. And and. See to recall him noting familiarity. I don't know why Weston and Sampson came up in that conversation. Maybe we were thinking about working with Weston and Sampson at that point, but I thought I recalled him saying that he was familiar with Weston and Sampson and and knew them. So. Youngest cousins there.
Yeah.
All right, awesome.
Okay, well, that was one thing I wanted to. Make public. And I I intend to follow up with the water commissioners to further that discussion with them. So. There are a a couple of things that I will, I I want to mention that. That I I know that at the end of the day, Weston and Sampson have prioritized or or given a higher ranking to some locations. And I I don't, I don't know to what degree the select board has has had conversations of. You know, a- as these rankings were progressing. And I know that there was a presentation. Earlier in the year from Weston and Sampson, but we haven't really seen anything since then. And and nothing was really flushed out at that time, but. I I. I think it should be noted that the ranking. Process is very subjective. I mean, there were six categories that were ranked one to five. And the the relative. The the reason for the one to five is very subjective. I I mean, and and let me just back up a little bit. I know that it's appropriate. It's an appropriate tool to rank different alternatives on different variables that are important. But oftentimes, as is the case, the the ranking and the weighting is very subjective. And and maybe counterproductive. I'm not saying that there's any introduction of bias by any by any means, but but the outcome can steer you in a direction that may not be the best decision. I'm not saying that is the case here, but I do want to bring out a couple of things. There were, there were five criteria rating. And it was distance, the distribution system, recharge area, potential pollution, parcel. Ownership and then density of parcels and maybe there's one I'm missing.
Yeah, six, there's six on.
Or six, so there's one more. I don't understand. Why is is so important? To be wary of sea level rise? Why one of the ranking criteria was not sleep seal arising in in flooding? And I'll get to that. I think that's important to get to basically.
Jack, can I just say, I mean, it seems like there's an underlying. Issue like.
No, 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 there isn't. I just, I'm just, I I just think it's ironic and I I just think it it. I mean, the the ranking itself, sea level is important, but sea level wasn't one of the six criteria.
Yeah, we specifically asked them to not include that in the the ranking and then to to add that on as a layer.
Right, and that was a separate consideration.
Yeah, that way they would be, gold place would be considered equally.
I get that. It's it's sites one, two, three, four, five and eight are subject to flooding in twenty one hundred.
Right.
So. That's a lot of sites, right?
And if if. But but some portion of those, it doesn't mean the entire site is, so. You know, you have to look at the site and see how relevant.
Oh, I know. I I know, and as best I can see from the maps, you know, it's, there's an overlap, so I mean, it's. It's it's worth noting.
Yeah.
It's worth noting. The the other thing that, so at the end of the day, wherever we do exploration, it's a good thing. I don't think any of these sites are bad sites. I mean. Site number four near the artichoke, is that part of the artichoke was watershed? I don't know, that wasn't considered. Site number three. They looked for, they they a criterion was pollution, but there was no mention of potential land application at site number three. Site number eight, Emory Lane, they mentioned that. The town at one time had tried to previously negotiate that site, but. I I'm not sure that part of Emory Lane was what was being negotiated. I just, I I just think that that might be. An error or something that might be corrected as an addendum. But but really, the the only other thing I wanted to mention is. One of the criteria was recharge area. And it was based on. The watershed discharge into the location. For these ten potential sites. Site number ten. Because it had a small drainage area, was assigned a number of one. And it's, it it abuts the river. And it, I just think it's unfair. In this, what I'm calling a subjective but well-informed ranking system, that you would not include. River recharge as part of your, as part of evaluating site ten. And if you were to evaluate river recharge, which, you know, I think Weston Sampson said was happening up at that. One of those other sites that's privately owned is going to be recharged there, and we think there's a million gallons a day that can come from that place. If you included river. Recharge for site number ten. And based on the weighting, some of the criteria are weighted twenty percent, some are weighted fifteen percent. That site ranking would go from a three point one. To three point nine, and it will be at the top of the list. So my my punchline here is I don't, I don't need need to make waves. It's a great report. There's a lot to dive into. It may not be a hundred percent. Accurate, but it was based on the information that they had collected and other sources. If if we're going to look at. The top suggested site, which is close to. Site number ten. And if we're, if we're wary of sea level rise i- in in a in a different context than the ranking. And if we are going to send out geophysical, the geophysical investigation at at the preferred site. The preferred site and site number ten are both on public property. I would suggest that the board consider expanding the geophysical investigation. To include site number ten. Just because if you're there, it's there, and if 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 recharge is in sea level rise is going to be tolerable. Let's not, why not consider it all around it?
Yeah, I think the challenge will be access because I think you'll have to get to site number ten from the river side, so.
River Road, yeah, I mean, we might actually be getting. I mean, maybe not, but I mean, there's potentially we keep be getting river access from River Road from the other side too. I mean, I'm not quite sure.
I think.
I haven't done the walk.
Yeah, Main Street or. I think Main Street is where the access would be crossing the pond.
But I mean, River Road is is accessible either if you're doing wave of the river, you can get in there from there, and it's probably a. It's probably not a heavy rig going there. It's probably some light equipment for the geophysical. So anyways, at the end of the day, if you want to throw that out there just to consider it because. I think it would be worthwhile and and cost effective to look there. Especially with the, you know, the potential that Weston Sampson found this spot that we had.
Yeah, so I I think the way that they've scoped this is to do the. The ground penetrating radar first. And then if that's promising to to put a well in, so I I guess if the ground penetrating radar is not promising, then maybe we go to ten. But I don't want to, you know. Cost wise, I don't want to expand the scope and do ground G P R at multiple sites if we have a promising site.
Okay.
You know, because we want to put the well. So, but but we can discuss that with them.
Okay, so so just, you know, I I asked the select board to. To to be considered as site number ten in the future if site number one doesn't work out rather than necessarily site number two.
What does that would be?
The whole. Little frustrated. I mean, I appreciate every time Jack speaks, so I'm going to be careful with what I say so not to offend him. For many years. The method of finding water has been to drop a well and see if there's anything there. There's been no methodical. Effort put into it, and that's what. The intent of the select board was when we engaged Weston and Sampson on this study. And so I think to diminish the study. Is not really fair. It it's a logical approach. That I think has been long overdue, and I think it's given us clarity of direction. And I think we should focus on that, and I appreciate your input, particularly with site ten. We can question them on that. But I think beyond that, I mean, if the water department wants to do a peer review, they're welcome to do it, but I don't think we should pay. If you want to go to site ten and and do the ground penetrating right now there, the water department has the right to do that. I think the select board had tried to. Sort of pull this together in one. Methodical program to move this forward. And, you know, we're optimistic that it will end up that way, so. That's most I have today.
May I say something?
Sure.
Is, it's not my intention to to criticize Weston Sampson or or any decisions they made or any recommendations they made. I I I I think I. I think. What I would like the select board to consider is that. I I I'm not saying the, I'm not diminishing the value of the Weston and Sampson report. I I I think that. It would, it it's appropriate to to look at the the information in the Weston Sampson report and make your own conclusions. And not necessarily be bound by the ranking system that they, you know, thoughtfully developed. I think there are other ways to. To to make your own decision on how to move forward. It's valuable report, there's lots of good data. Like to get some of the resources that they have and might like to approach them or at some point to see if the supporting documentation could be. An addendum to that report just for everyone's records. So by no means. Is is my critique intended to be a criticism. It's just, I'm just thought it it was an honest review that I wanted to share and. And and just allow the select board to to be more informed if that's, if anything I said was valid.
Anything else in here we want to highlight or discuss?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at at site ten. There's a site that I would be very concerned about sea level rise. And, yeah, and I I'm I'm not saying that that it would not be another site that we'd look at if the first site isn't. Been viable.
I mean, you've had an engineering firm come up with recommendations.
Right.
Excluding sea level rise.
Right.
And.
But we have, we but we also did get information on sea level rise as a as a secondary consideration. You know, it's an additional consideration and that's, and it wasn't part of the weighting. Which you pointed out.
Right.
But we do have that information nonetheless. And so, you know, we will have to make. If we get to that point, some consider, you know, some judgment as to how how do we weight it.
Anyway, you go forward, you're going to have to end up curating the information that's been presented to you. So I I think you're actually. Saying the same thing. Jack's obviously curated. You're pointing out there's different factors to curate. I mean, you know, you might take all the town apostles. As a separate entity, you know, one thing I would look at the ranking is this partial ownership, which is an on off switch. It's either five or one. I would almost exclude that, look at everything else. But have. Possible ownership as another overarching. Element, just like Seabird says, that's just the way I would do it. So it's just more of a duration with everything.
While. You were all here, I just want to follow up on the church street project. Is the erosion control going to be cleared up? Is that part of the system?
So I asked about that. They said that it can't be picked up until it is, all the grass that was disturbed is is. Basically has broke down and has been done a lot.
So they are coming back.
They are coming back.
Because the stuff that was in people's yards or, I mean, they're now, I think residents are pulling it up and just throwing it in the wetlands to get it out of their yards. So I. And and a lot of it's going to get grown over, so was that part of the Hong Kong rule that they had to come back and get the. Erosion control typically?
It is.
Okay.
Well, I'm present sure of it. I believe it was.
Okay, just want to make sure that doesn't get left in place, so.
Yeah, because I talked to Michelle before she left and she said that we had to stay till everything was stable and then it could be picked up, so.
So are you withholding any payment for them to make sure they come back and do that?
Simply taken out. I haven't seen a development for this month yet.
Typically, that's the hard part of the project, was getting them to come back and.
Yeah.
So, okay.
The whole circle.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so how did, I don't recall how we launched it, Kevin, we were going to drop some dates for the sidewalk.
Yeah, we, well, we got, we got their proposals. You know, we haven't signed that contract. We wanted that, had to, you know, this report. Tonight's meeting, so. We, I don't believe we talked about potential dates until then. See if I have any. Yeah, I don't, I don't find anything in my, in my correspondence.
Okay, so. So you're gone next.
Yes.
And Rick, when are you gone?
I'm gone on the eleven.
All right, so who did something and we get back at the eighth perhaps, if that works.
Okay, I'm not back till the eighteen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're meeting that night too.
Yeah.
We want to invite Kevin to offer some dates after. After the eighteenth and. With the goal to get it done in the month of July. Once we have a couple of options on dates, we can shop them around.
Yeah.
Obviously, we want Butch there. There's, you know, certain people that we get on there. So thinking about the. Some time away to the twenty second.
Yeah, ideally, yeah, yeah. Are you all clear about me?
I'll be off the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh.
My birthday. I don't even know what day of the week it is yet, but I will.
Twenty seven Saturday, you're good.
I don't know, some days I don't. And you said Butch is going to want to go. I think what I'll do is talk to Mike Dwyer and see if I can get the gate or two. Because I don't. These are me and the old, us old folks don't want to walk up and down the hill. See if we can steal that too.
It's called a sidewalk. All right. Great, all right, thank you for sharing your thoughts, Jack. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Where, when they got to the sidewalk? What do you think the the timeframe to then to get into site to that?
Hopefully in it, like early August.
Okay, good, that's what I wanted.
I mean, the thought was that, you know, if this looks promising, to be able to come to the fall town meeting with a request and all that, you know, you want to do further testing, right?
And that one, you put a well.
Yeah.
I talked to Butch. He said that might not be a bad spot because that used to be where the well was for the school many years ago.
Is that right?
Yeah, he said that's that's where the well was. He had some story of where it recharged. Cover broke. Somebody lost their dog in there and him and his father went down to get the the dog out. He said that's where the well was to build a lot of them in school. Hopefully, they're buying up the right trip. He told me that yesterday.
Interesting.
Right.
Yeah.
Interesting, but.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move back to item V, Tom Andrew.
I ordered a fair amount of paper in the. Back it really just to illustrate the kind of some of the closeout steps. I think the the major report, I think you got separately, although we need to post that to the web if it's on. It's like sixty seven mags. So it's really not conducive to the email. But the complete M V P report is basically a. Uh, but the complete MVP report is, uh, basically a compilation of the five or six individual reports that preceded it. Um, you can tell just from the paper trail, this enormous amount of time and effort that went into grant administration and closeout. And I just offer a little unsolicited critique that that, you know, grant this size, it's worth it. I mean, you've got a lot of money, but but this is part of what, you know, goes under grants, it's just, I, I, I know Christine was here till, I don't know, probably eight thirty or nine Friday night, uh, you know, we're trading calls at that point, we're both at our best and it's just the amount of time that goes into like checking all the boxes with the, with the state. Uh, it's unfortunate in my view, cause it's a distraction from the actual work that we need to be doing here. But that's, that's just a, you know, I think the MVP grant was one of the more bureaucratic grants I've I've ever seen.
Yeah, definitely was.
Uh, you know, I don't wanna diminish the value of the work that was done, I think it's really extraordinary how much got done in a short, short timeframe, but uh, you know, if the Commonwealth would show a little more faith in cities and towns to manage the money and and not have probably twenty or twenty-five percent of the effort go to grant administration, that that would be better. Uh, but the main, the main thing I wanted to say on on this topic, uh, with the MVP grant is that the, we are, uh, while the focus up and up through Friday was closing out the grant and getting everything reported to the state, the immediate focus needs to be what, how how do we use the funding that the voters approved at the Springtown meeting? The best position, uh, the town to move forward with something actionable. Uh, so I know that's gonna be a topic at the, um, Climate Change Resiliency Committee, I believe away from Wednesday, is that right?
Right, yeah.
So that's, that's gonna be a really important meeting, and I know, uh, they're looking to both brainstorm but also come out, I think with like a fairly you know, easier set of either
Yeah, yeah.
preparation or set of things.
Hope is to to come out with this, with a, you know, with this target set of actions to apply that for forty thousand dollars to.
Yeah, with with, I think, uh, you know, one, one objective being how to position this, um, for grant funding next year, whether that's, um, another MVP grant next February roughly to Remar.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, or potentially some kind of a hazard mitigation grant or some kind of brick grant in the late fall. Um, we have to figure that out as quickly as we can. Uh, so that's something that.
Because we would need to get book funded at, at the matching funding at, uh, the Fall Town.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So there have been a few different ideas, uh, thrown out there, uh, which is great, and, uh, we just need to, you know, that's something just in terms of like the next two, two to three weeks, uh, the more focused we can get on that, I think the better. Uh, so that we don't, uh, so if if we are able to come up with something that's competitive for grant funding next, uh, fall or winter, that we're able to move on that and not potentially lose, you know, significant time, this is a huge amount of work to build on, but it it's only really just scratching the surface of what needs to happen in this, this project. So that might be something that pencil in for the eighteenth meeting. I think if whatever comes out of Climate Change Resiliency Committee, because unless if it comes out fully formulated and it's all
Yeah.
clear, great, but but perhaps the following week, you know, that might be a good thing for this board to discuss on the eighteenth to really try and crystallize how we wanna move forward because the, you know, until, until my office can have a clear sense of like scope, vendor, potentially vendors, uh, you know, assume, you know, we can't, we can't have anyone helping us till we have them under contract, we can't get them under contract till we have their scope and budget. So it's pretty, it's pretty, uh, ambitious, uh, what we're trying to do. So we really ought to focus as much time to look at this as we have available.
Right, Larry, has there been any, uh, comments? Uh, educating, like, people on River Road in terms of cutting vegetation and, I mean, I know there's been outreach, um, I know this is something that CONCON has toyed with on and off, just because, you know, it's not enough to just say, you know, what we can do to fix it, it'd be nice to prevent, you know, or third cutting so they can see the river, that, that really is.
Right, um. No, there hasn't been anything directed at that, I mean, that's definitely been a point of conversation.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, question is how do you do it? And, um, you know, based on the fact that we don't have wetlands by law, whatever we do is not enforceable in any way, uh, you know, this we can try to educate people and hope.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
This was giving that, giving the presentation.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, you know, the flip side of that is that we pretty quickly need to actively start looking at trees that, that need to be removed because, um, and there's one tree that, uh, it's in front, I can't remember the, the addresses in front of it, um. It, there's, I don't know if you saw it, but the large tree that that toppled over, actually, it's one large tree, but there's a group of trees, actually, it's, it isn't in one trunk in there. Um, and it, you know, it took tons of soil with it. You know, there's a big chunk of soil, and there are a lot of trees that are lined up uh, waiting to do just that again, and, uh, you know, that wasn't even a tree, I think it was dead, um, there were a you know, there are trees that are dead that are even more, more prime because their roots are decomposing, um, and, uh, yeah, so that's just another thought, you know, the flip side is we actually need to actively think about what trees should be taken out because otherwise it's just gonna degrade the bank and big jobs.
Yeah. Alright.
Alright, uh, next item, the, uh, land grant closeout, we, uh, uh, another one that, you know, took, uh, fair amount of time on the administrative side, partly because of the state, partly because of the, uh, kind of circumstances of the, the land itself. Uh, but I'm pleased to say that we did submit all of the paperwork to the state on Friday, uh, which was, uh, was all required by the end of the fiscal year, and uh, we put in for the maximum eligible for acquisition, uh, for reimbursement. I'm not sure if they'll go for all the expenses, we included the shared property tax, I don't know if they'll buy that, but it's a fifty-six percent reimbursement was what was awarded, so it's fifty-six percent of every local dollar that we're able to document that we expended. Uh, so, um, we did get an acknowledgement of receipt and, uh, it does look like on the adverse possession uh, issue that they are gonna be satisfied with having, uh, submitted a claim that was filed. Uh, and we've agreed, I talked to the state administrator last Tuesday, Vanessa Farney, and, uh, they're, they're content that we're gonna keep them apprised as that works its way through the court. And once that is formally resolved, uh, at that point, we'll need to get the conservation restriction re-recorded because it's gonna show a different, uh, property bounds than we, the earlier one showed. Uh, so there are gonna be some loose ends that we'll need to stay on, basically, once the court case gets resolved, also with a sign. Uh, the sign that was done was a temporary sign, we'll hold off to get a permanent sign until the uh, property line is formally resolved, and, uh, we are gonna make some changes to the sign. Uh, we have to make some formatic adjustments to keep it to the eleven by seventeen that we're gonna print in-house, so uh, the text will be bigger and so on and so forth before it actually gets, uh, allocated as a permanent sign. I, I have no idea what to expect in terms of timeline, it's, uh, the court filing, I have to assume it's gonna take months.
Yeah.
Maybe several, well, many months, so, so. But it's good that the state is, uh, satisfied with that, they're not waiting for us to, you know, for that to formal resolve, cause as you know, just a couple of months ago, we didn't know exactly and if they were gonna see that as, uh, complying with the grant or not. It would be nice when we actually get the reimbursement check, that's when we'll really.
But at least the deadline on these two hasn't passed.
Yeah, it's a huge wait, and, uh, yeah, needless to say with, uh, you know, Michelle having, I think her last day was what, the seventeenth? And she did a phenomenal job teeing everything up that she could, but it was a lot in those last, uh, thirteen days of the month that that needed to be kind of pushed over the finish line and, you know, so it felt good to get those things sent out. And the, uh, estimate addition stats there.
Right.
That was brutal. So, yeah, June was tough. Uh, so, uh, Coffin Street carpet replacement, just wanna let you know, we do have lawyers, spare is under contract. Uh, the two-page kind of scope, uh, Christine had put this together a while back, uh, uh, within Botham Butch and Michelle and, uh, and others. I think it's a really nice, I, I really, you can tell her, I really love it, it's like you can read it, it's clear, like, I, I wanna get to where we're doing more scopes like this that fit on a page or two and that are really succinct. Um, you know, I, I thought, you know, I think staff done a really nice job on that, so it's under contract, we're a little later than we'd hoped, it's taken longer. Uh, but I think we're, with the overall calendar for that project, we're on track, the objective continues to be having, uh, construction cost estimates uh, over the winter that we can bring to next spring to see construction funding, uh, next spring. Now, so we can hopefully get those colors replaced next construction season, so that continues to be the goal, and then we're on track with that. Uh, terms of other updates, I dropped in this DPU correspondence, I don't really have any say about it, uh, but just to make you aware this came in. I think a short time just blow, we've closed out the packet, so if that's something we wanna discuss, we can put it on for the, maybe the July eighteenth meeting, um, I know, uh, I, I think Elisa indicated she's probably gonna zoom into that.
Yeah. Are you, Rick, or is that your?
Which meeting?
The DPU.
Um, turn, who's the, the date of that again?
Uh, twenty sixth.
Um, yeah, I do have that in my schedule, which actually, I was gonna say, I mean, that, that conceivably depending upon when we, uh, scheduled with Western Sampson, hopefully that doesn't conflict, yeah.
Then one other update, uh, I did get an email from, uh, member of the city council over the weekend with a, a progress update on the Middle Street Bridge. Uh, so the IMA, uh, obviously, I'm sure, I'm assuming you all saw the, the article in the paper, I think was pretty favorable in terms of granting the issues, um. The IMA was referred to the, uh, committee that has really been before all along, their Public Works and Safety Committee, so it's councillor Jim McColl, he's the chair of that, and, uh, this will be discussed at a meeting of his committee on Monday the fifteenth. Um, and that's gonna be six thirty PM hybrid meeting. So, uh, I just got that information, uh, that date works for me. I'll put that on my calendar and, uh, we'll, uh, definitely do something with the, uh, website. I just need to be in the next couple of days to, uh, get something out before.
You said the thirteenth?
Fifteen.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, Monday the fifteenth, July fifteenth.
Yeah, I, I doubt that I'll be able.
No, I know you're, yeah, yeah. Um, and then, uh, he says he's plans for the committee to review the, um, uh, let's see. Move it to the full council on July twenty second. And he said, I do not expect discussions about whether to move forward or not in committee. I think that discussion, uh, would arise in the full council meeting um, with regard to funded commitments. So basically, the fifteenth and the twenty second are, are, uh, dates that this is expected to be taken up.
So when would, what would the subcommittee be doing then?
Uh, maybe reviewing the IMA as the form, make sure everything's like, all that, all that, everything's just so. I did make a commitment, uh, the meeting, uh, back in mid-June to put together a, uh, overall calendar, including a procurement calendar, votes on funding, you know, potential contract award dates. So that can, and I, I got back to the councillor and let him know that is something I'm still got on my to-do list. I am gonna do everything I can to get that done before I leave town, so, and then basically in the next couple of days.
Alright. Um, I've seen department updates, so, um, we have a Veterans Breakfast on Thursday, July eleventh at nine AM at Sage Center. This, this agent Steve Bond. Anything you wanna say about that, Angus?
Nope.
This is a it's a periodic, oh, quarter of breakfast, yeah. Um, okay, nothing?
Steve Bond used the, uh, he was at the, yeah, Memorial Day.
Right.
Uh, any more permission, any updates or liaison updates, I mean, you. Uh, I have the action items, staff reap appointments for FY twenty five and on.
Well, I sent around the, uh, it's a significantly reduced list. Uh, basically to reflect those, so this is what I sent, uh, midday today, did you guys all see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's the one designation for the, what's it, election officer, that can't be made until the next week, so we're, the state ties our lives. Not before the eleventh, nor after August, but, uh, fortunately, there's no elections between now and July eighteenth, so we do have that, uh, in for the July eighteenth, made it to that designation. Other than that, I would just, uh, ask the board to, uh, vote the list of, uh, both uh, union and, uh, part-time officers and dispatchers. Dispatchers, as you know, are, are subject to the town manager appointing authority, not select board, but since the board's prior votes had had a stated end date, we thought, let's just ask it about it, just so there's no ambiguity, but going forward, those reap appointments would be made by my office, uh, for the part-time dispatchers and the full-time would, for both, uh, dispatch and police going forward would just be at-will employees, which is the, the fact of how it is right now. Uh, so basically, we're just kind of cleaning up this process so that, um, in future years, we're not asking the board to revoke appointments that, that really, um,
Revoke.
Not only don't need to be revoked, but you really don't have a basis to not revoke it, cause anything other than that would be, uh, you know, um, something actionable out of the union contracts, so.
So then what would the motion be then? How do you want the motion worded?
Uh, I think to, um, approve the list of personnel reap appointments, uh, you know, just use whatever heading is on that, and would, would the, would the date specified?
Sure, so, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the list of staff reap appointments for FY twenty five as included in the email that we're looking at or in the, in the PDF that we're looking, we had available, it's, I don't think it was part of the packet. Um, uh, effective, um, today, uh, July first, twenty twenty four through, um, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Um, second, so Angus, if we're, if this is the last time we're doing it, do we wanna indicate somehow in the motion that this is?
Yeah, I think, I think including that end date is a little, a little confusing because, yeah, cause as it says in, in, for those who are full-time, those would be at-will appointments, so, so they would continue to serve as long as they, uh, you know, until there's some separation service.
Right, okay, so it's only the reserve police officers.
Correct, those need to be re-appointed every year, those are board action, so those, that list would continue.
So, okay, so I, I will revise my, my, uh, motion then um, to be specific to, um, the, the end date is specific to the reserve police officer positions, of which there are five, and, and, uh, that end date would be six thirty, twenty twenty five.
And the remaining positions will be at-will?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Alright, I'll second that, I've got a solution. Any further discussion? On the table? Uh, I have the is request for reap appointment of EMA representatives and staff for FY twenty five.
And, uh, on the advice of council, where those are, uh, under the town manager appointing authority, I'm not, uh, putting those to the board for, for vote, so we're basically, we wrote a memo today that, that sets out all the names and it puts it in writing for the EMA director. Uh, but there's no need to, uh, for board action.
Okay.
So, the same names you saw on the, the list from a couple of the, actually, just last week, which you know.
Right, item C is to review and approve the updated grade and step wage table for FY twenty five, which includes budgeted full increase of two percent.
Yeah, the, the, uh, change here is, as you know, is due to the, uh, acceptance by the new land and building services administrator at a rate that, uh, was above what had been carried in the budget, but was approved by the board, uh, maybe last week, so that uh, candidate did accept the offer and, uh, will be starting work on the twenty ninth of July at the, at the rate shown. Uh candidate did accept the offer and uh will be starting work on the twenty ninth of July at the at the rate shown.
Is that the only rate we're addressing at this point, or we're addressing all, the whole?
Uh that was the only one that changed, so everything else uh.
Voted on that.
Yeah, I think you, you voted on it last time, yeah, so that's the only one that changed.
Make them off and put the grade and step with colo. For the land and building services administrator.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's right, and uh and I'll just note that at your next meeting, I'll put on for the conservation agent, I did get his signed offer in the last. Forty minutes, but uh, but I don't wanna shoot on that, and I'll just put that out there, July eighteen for the conservation agent, who was also brought in at a. Rate that was somewhat different to what was in the, in the, there was budgeted.
Okay, on favor.
All right.
Uh I am D is to designate Select Board Representatives for CPC, Investment Policy, CIC, and Affordable Housing Trust. So we didn't do this in the agent.
I literally, I I I, I thought we had, but I watched the video and it literally was just. Chair, vice chair, and then we're done.
Yeah, I think we did because. I'm on the investment committee, that's a weird one.
Yeah.
They met the one time.
Well, they feel, as you know, feel really strongly about the bidding, you know, and getting a new one. And and the issue there is that it's gonna take some dozens of hours of staff time and and month after month after month.
With that one meeting, there was a process to do it, an RFP versus or whatever.
Right, yeah.
And they were gonna go down that path, and then everything went radio silent, never heard a thing.
Well, with the committee, but at a staff level, it's continued to uh, I went to a luncheon down in uh Lynnfield. Caitlin and I did uh probably back in March. That was given by um KP Law with Rockland Trust and Tony Rizzelli was there. And I asked this specific question, which I had already asked Town Council. But you always, like, I like asking the same question to different people, see if you get the same answer. And I did, you, it's exactly what I explained to the committee, you can do a. Uh RFP that's a very uh, you know, where you have to go with a low bidder. Or you can do an RQ that's more of a, you know, it's a, it's a lengthy bureaucratic purchasing process and document. And uh they didn't, they don't like that, I don't like that either, cause it takes a bunch of time, but that is what you have to do. It is something we need to do, we ought to do, we're we're more than six years with the same portfolio manager, so it's definitely something that's ought to happen, and I agree with that. It's just a matter of bandwidth, and so that's kind of why. And I know if I go back to the committee and say that, they're just gonna roll their eyes, because I've been saying that for two and a half years. Or I don't know, quite that long, but but a long time. And uh, yeah, back until this became like a big dust-up, they were meeting quarterly and it was very productive and they were, I don't know, productive, it was interesting. They gave a kind of a sounding board to look at the investment uh reports that we got and. Then it really just became, they became, and and I think it remains one hundred percent focused on wanting to change. Portfolio managers and. Um, you know, it, to this point, it's just not been, you know, how it's bandwidth, cause it's not whether people like it or not, it's not something that's gonna happen. Without me being personally involved, and I've put in. Many hours and it's like trying to punch your way out of a paper bag, it's not simple, it's not. A couple of hours of work, it's dozens of hours of work and, you know, my work less than, I I just can't. Find the time, and nor nor do I think it's as important as the things I am finding time for, that's.
Yeah.
You know, at the end of the day, I have to be able to put my time toward. You know, what the board. Prioritizes and what I have to do because of legal requirements and so forth, I can't, you know.
But the meeting, wasn't there a path that, and Locke was gonna write it, whether it was the RFP or the, and. Worded so tightly, he couldn't control this dynamic system.
I sent them everything in Word version.
And nothing would happen.
I've never, no, I've never gotten anything back.
We gave them an opportunity and then it just went.
I think, you know, part of it is, it's just frustration with the procurement process, and I get that frustration because it takes a ton of time. But it is the law, and I know there was a time in this town that people didn't really. You know, maybe they would have sent out a two-pager and said, hey, here's our questionnaire coming, you know, but that's, that's not what. The Inspector General's office has told me, that's not what multiple attorneys and including our town council has told me and. So I did get a, yeah, I got a written opinion from KP this spring. With sample RFPs, and they're like the same kinds of things that I've been. Sharing for almost two years, and so this is what we're gonna have to do, no one wants to do it, cause you have to, you have to just, you know, the RFP, you have to. Have like weighted, you know, it's gonna be, you know, X points for this and X points for that, and it's it's the numerical winner, it's if the. Lowest price responsive bid gets the contract unless you wanna do uh, you know. Um something that's more qualifications-based, which is also very time-intensive, so. Um, so, yeah, I, you know, I I think. Well, I think.
I need to get out the path then.
But but what, but that is, I mean, I know when that committee came up for reappointment this this year, I I was actually quite surprised that it didn't trigger yet another. Because it seems like it has gotten to a point where people are such, are like a raw nerve on that issue and you can't. Like engage in a discussion about investment. Performance without it becoming like, why haven't we gone to the chairman? You live through these meetings, you have a good insight of the day-to-day of what keeps us busy, and I think, I think, you know, I think you know why that has happened, yeah.
So before I make a motion, the Pennucket Building Committee still?
No, no, I think on my note, didn't I?
It is it, when you read.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking at the agenda, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, it just uh.
Look at the packet, I get the full information there.
I mean, I, I think you, you and I were both at the last meeting, I think it might officially exist.
Yeah, well, we should probably keep it, because they did. Yeah.
I thought the pro, I thought it was officially done. I thought there was still a closeout, even the someone is still supposed to go back to the three towns, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion then, make the motion, we'll keep it the same, uh Rick Parker for capital improvements. Uh Wendy Reed for Community Preservation Committee, Chris Wild for Investment Policy, Wendy Reed on Pennucket. High school, middle school building, and affordable housing, Wendy Reed.
There must be another one given one day, isn't it?
Well, if you could do investment policy. Well, we second the motion, yes.
All right, on the favor. All right, so like four meeting minutes. So, didn't we go through the twenty-third?
We did, and then it didn't happen.
And we just didn't vote?
We, you, you said uh edits, I didn't add any edits in because. It took a backseat to everything else we're doing this week.
Cause I don't have the edits that I made.
I still have the notes.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, so if you're okay with me just using the notes from last week, I can apply those to.
Okay, Rick, we deferred because you wanted to read them, have you in fact read?
I I I I read them in partially, I'm I'm fine with, okay, I'm sure everything that I will ever wanna know about is there.
Okay.
I reviewed them before I went to Max, I'm always good, I thought I answered the conversation here.
All right, so do you wanna make a motion then?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-third.
Sorry. With amendments.
All right, all right, all right, good, June fourth. Uh did you read the reasons?
Believe I did. But I missed stuff.
I went through them very quickly and I saw nothing objectionable.
Come on, it's gotta be something, man, look, Max, earn his pay.
Um, on the top page two, about the transition plan for the conservation agent. Uh says interviews to be conducted by Angus with input, it should be from Molly Hawkins. And David Carrot, among others, I mean, I don't know if that's accurate.
Yeah, I wouldn't say input, I would say involvement, you know, I I would even just say by Angus with Molly and David.
Yeah, so there's no among others.
Yeah.
And now, and and moving whatever he said with just.
Yeah, yeah, they were part of the interviews, yeah.
Um and then on item E V on the same page. The whole thing about the Conservation Commission was that we are. Approving the Town Manager's appointment, so the sentence says Parker motion to appoint Baron Kohn, uh maybe just change it to approve. Is that right, Angus?
Yeah.
Um on the next page, I have a question under item F A on the Middle Street Bridge meeting. Uh said Jenny Jenny's urged the board to contact Bruce Tarz obviously getting involved, I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall that.
Yeah.
You want to just drop that?
Yeah, I mean, the first part of the sentence is not that. Important, but. Um, yeah, I think that's fine, we just dropped the same part, and that's it.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June fourth is amended.
All right, move on to item F B, what are your check, response and update?
Wait.
Let Angus go first, cause otherwise you just get a lot of dribble.
Well, so we had, we had a joint regional meeting last week, it was a remote meeting, and uh. Pretty good participation, uh other than uh the, what are your administration wasn't represented, um.
No, don't say that. Okay, Maureen's thought.
Maureen wasn't represented, yeah.
Okay.
Well, nor nor.
I guess you're correct, okay.
Yeah, and uh and Georgetown wasn't there, but it seemed like most of the towns, I think, just better than this.
Was Raleigh not here?
I'm trying to start on a high note.
That's the end of the high notes.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, you know, the approach is, first of all, there was the, the information was shared verbally about these meetings that have. Apparently been going on, you know, with Northern Essex, that's not something anyone in the group had any direct knowledge of, nor had been, you know, part of. The uh, yeah, I mean, there was discussion of, I I don't know, I mean, there was discussion about. You know, should the focus be the agreement, should the focus be the project, um and I think a number of people, including uh, you know, Wes Newberry. Said the agreement is really, needs to be the focus, and there was a. You know, discussion of setting up these kind of subcommittees.
But, before we even get to that point. The mayor of Hable.
Oh, yeah.
State very clearly stated. She will not support any amendment to the regional agreement.
Period.
Period, that was it, not just the economic component, the voting nut. Which I appreciate her saying that very much, and as I said. Any other of these members would have done the same thing if it was issued to the town. But then they wanna go down the road. Of going into three subcommittees to rewrite the agreement. Why, that's pretty much what I said, they said I wanna be a stick in the mud, but I don't see the sense of wasting six months on this. Well, to show good faith was the answer that was given back, um. I don't know where you go from here. But there, everybody else is, oh, let's, let's go, let's do this. But yet, you know what the result is gonna be, you can spend as much time as you want on this. And it's the one vote she's gonna say no, and she's made that very clear at every meeting, and again, I'm not offended by it, cause she's telling you. Straightly wasting your time if you keep doing this.
And there's other units for that meeting?
The other what?
Or the minutes for that meeting?
I took detailed notes, um.
I did too, but editorialized a lot.
Yeah, I, and I'm happy to send those around.
Well, I I wasn't asking that, I I just seems to be that, I mean, I think the implication. Weeks ago, or maybe even months ago now, was that this may be more of a legislative issue. And and, you know, so, it almost seems to be, if if Hable just comes right out and says that, then why waste time doing anything else? We ought to bring, be bringing our legislators.
Well, I was kinda trying to push for that, because the mayor goes. Newbury what, had his legal counsel put together a whole letter and the amendment process and everything else, and after you realize that. It can't be voted, then you have to vote a legislator.
Right.
But seek a legislative amendment of the acts, you know, but. He didn't engage in the conversation, he just, none of these people did, I felt like. Angus backed me up when I made my comments, but that was about it, everybody wants to start going on these subcommittees and. Get to work on rewriting an agreement, but it doesn't, I I was totally and completely flummoxed by that, because there's no sense to it in my mind.
Sounds like they got time to waste.
Well, and they also kept wanting to discuss the NECO, the 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 merger, that's irrelevant to this commit- committing.
So I I agree a hundred percent with what Chris said, there uh just a couple of nuances uh. That may or may not add anything, one is that uh Mayor Barrett said that, she said it at least three times, maybe four times in the meeting, at. At least one of those times, she said it, that her reason for taking that position. Was that she felt it was clear that the underlying intent of any change. Would be to change the math and not be helpful to her taxpayer, so that maybe goes without saying, but she did say that explicitly at one.
Oh, she's correct on that.
Yeah, she's correct, and and I, Chris was was very, very diplomatic about, you know, thanking for her for her frankness, but basically saying. It creates a stalemate, uh the other nuance that I would say that I think maybe Steve Crane, that that sorts guy said, and. Maybe he wasn't the only one, was that. Because of the higher profile the project now has, because of the involvement of the administration, that he felt that. Or, and I think others felt, that there's, you know, people watching this and that even if there was a process undertaken. That that resulted in the agreement of eleven, or ten out of eleven communities, even if that doesn't have any effect. That it would show the administration that the towns are making a good faith effort. And and, but I don't know how you really effectuate that, because you don't know where the town stand without bringing this to a vote in eleven communities, which is an enormous. Investment of time and resources, so.
And it's gonna get voted down.
And it's gonna get voted down, but but I just, I don't know if that adds anything, but that, there was that, that that sense of like. We've gotta try, even if we know it's not gonna pan out, and Chris and I talked a little bit afterwards and, you know, I I told him, I, you know. We have no time to waste, no one at that table has time to waste, but I I think, I I felt like. You know, I could live with going to like two or three meetings. And feel that that was like worth making the effort, but I agree that there's a point at which it's not worth. Making the effort, because it becomes too big an amount of time, that's just not justified, cause it's not gonna lead to that.
So is that, is it a requirement to make that good faith effort?
No, 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 I think this was maybe in the spirit of, if the, if there, if people are thinking the Commonwealth's gonna swoop in and like. Put an enormous amount of new state money toward this, you know, maybe they'd be less inclined to do that if they feel like the area of communities aren't. Aren't like really trying to find some. Yeah, exactly, yeah, I think it's more of like a. Politics, like a perception.
Oh, yeah, that's, they're trying to put on a good show.
Yeah, yeah.
She's got the right to vote it down, so does, that's it, so it's, I just. Was lost by this.
So if if the, this committee was gonna seek a legislative solution, what would, what would that imply?
The attorney from, I knew Rick's attorney is probably helping with that, I have no idea.
Yeah.
I mean, I I guess at the end, if I had my choice, which I had no choice, um. Could be doing parallel paths, I mean, when you go sequentially, you're just eating that time, right? And this thing I got the sense of is. It's starting to dilute this committee to the fact. That we might not change the agreement, but we might fund the project, and that's, that's very dangerous. Now, they keep thinking this NECO thing, and they said, well, if the numbers less than the five hundred million, we might be able to, no, the point is. And I said, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to modify the agreement. Was told, no, it's not happening, and the mayor, hey, well, she's, she's correct, I mean. So, you're not gonna change the agreement with this committee, that is very clear to me. The reason I called Angus after the meeting, I was just gonna send her resignation letter off this morning, cause it's pointless, but he was gracious enough to offer the next group meeting. And Wes Newberry, so you sort of hung me on that.
Well, there's no reason you can't. I mean, I don't know to what extent you expressed your opinion at that meeting.
No, no, he was, yeah, he spoke up at least three times, and it was very, very diplomatic, very. Clear, and uh, and I told him afterwards, he he said to me that he felt that. He felt a little bit on an island, other than that I had, I had kind of got, had his back, so to speak. I told him I didn't think he was on an island, I.
Nobody else responded or.
No, they didn't, but I really feel like, I didn't feel any, I think you said something like scum at the garden party, I didn't pick up on that at all. Or sticking to, like, I I felt like what you said, even though people weren't like saying, oh, yeah, I agree, I I didn't get any sense that. The majority on the call disagreed with what you were saying.
So is there any way to pull that out of people, so that a clearer sense of where people stand? Um, comes through at this meeting?
They almost seem to be engaged with moving forward on the rewrites in the different committees, it's three separate committees.
It's just like this.
That's one hundred percent what it is. That's one hundred percent what it is.
Well, I don't know.
Again, they, they all sat there and. First of all, none of them know me anyway. They all know each other, but I'm the, the odd man in. And they're looking like, what is this guy yapping on about? And it felt awkward with that. The whole meeting was very odd.
If the solution most likely is political. Have you been speaking to those involved at the political end, what they might find helpful? In this situation, I mean, I don't know that rewriting an agreement that's never gonna be agreed to makes sense, but. But, but they may, they may, they may, they may, well, no, or they may appreciate. Some sense of consensus as to what the path forward is. In other words, don't do the agreement. I mean, we, we tried that over. And talked it on a much simpler matter and then ended up crashing and burning, just like you might expect this to, but. The, I would focus more on the political end and I would find out from them what they would find helpful. And then, you know, you could work with, say, the, the two mayors that are in favor of change and some of the. The majority of the committees are clearly in charge.
But this is a group with no authority. It's a working committee that's.
No, right, right.
And so you, you're gonna come with an agreement. It would have to pass in all the towns and.
Yeah, but, but I'm saying, I'm saying, don't pursue the agreement. But find out, but find out what the political person would find beneficial. To support the change that I think, other than the mayor Havel, everybody kind of sees. Cause you just wanna do this type of structures, that it's something done now. This is like, so nineteen seventies. I mean, it's like sixties and, and that was not a good time in Massachusetts. That was a time when a lot of bad stuff was going on. So I would focus on the political and find out.
If anybody read the agreement, thought about it, then you would have never signed it. What are you gonna, yeah, it's an impossible.
It's because all the money's coming from the state. Like, nobody paid attention to the. Yeah, so, uh, so who was the, our political? Um, I mean, is Senator Char over all these communities?
Senator Char, Faindall represent, right, ninety-nine point nine percent and Senator Payano represent.
Char, Char represents Havel?
Uh, Char represents all the smaller communities, uh, Faindall represents Havel, Merrimack, uh, Ames, very.
You'd, you'd have to find out what committees are working on it, where exactly resides, because you, you do wanna know. Who's in charge of the committee, wherever they are from. It's not just about your local representative, who's, who's got power to move stuff through.
So there was.
But Char's important and Faindall are important, but there's gonna be reps involved and it may not be your local reps that are the ones that are gonna. Pull the trigger on it.
Yeah, but this is us talking with the processes. This committee doesn't have any agreement on that. That's the problem. They wanna. Get into working groups to start writing and.
You, you struck your own course before, so you could model for the rest of it. You've done it before.
That's all I'm saying.
But i- isn't the idea partly to, uh, that if there was something that was broadly, if not unanimously agreed. That kind of does the groundwork for the legislators to say, hey, this is something that isn't gonna pass unanimously, but, you know. Ten out of eleven, this is the will of the community.
There's a general consensus, they should be distilled. They should know that this isn't.
Cause they're not gonna get to that themselves.
But there's a group of, what is it, fifteen to sixteen people. We go to the legislature and say, we're speaking for all the people in the communities.
No.
I mean, it's.
No, you gotta figure it out, Chris, but I mean.
Yeah, I think it would go back to the boards at least, you know.
It's gotta be voters of the towns, I would think, right?
Yeah, but.
But that's a year or two down the road.
I think short of that, we could bring, uh, an agreement that all the boards and councils. Or whatever.
What's the consensus of the involved?
Again, we don't know the process. Does the legislature have the ability? How does it work there? How do you get into this? Just, you know, we don't know any of this. It's. You know, there's one guy sitting there saying, you have to do it with good faith. Well, it's a waste of time, so I'm not sure about good faith. And then the other person started saying towards the end of the meeting, well, we have to do something on the school regardless of this. That's telling me that they're starting a fraction. They're gonna wanna do this NECO thing if they ever can get something going in. That's. Pretty perilous.
Yeah, so I think there was gonna be a certain number of people who, um. It was, who will wanna go with the NECO agreement, you know, with, with some partner with NECO. And kick it down the road their two generations.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
That's a danger.
Right.
And doing nothing leads more to that than, than, than trying to quit something.
Right, right.
That, look, you, you said the lawyer. Lots of times, things get written to the legislature. By councils for towns and, you know, Newbury boys' lawyer has a plan on, on how we were focused on legislature. That's what I understand.
No, he doesn't apply on how you do it. He just says that's the next step.
Yeah, well, okay.
So seek a legislative amendment to the acts.
Right.
Or file litigation in Superior District Court.
Well, I, I would go to legislature.
Even if that's the right process, maybe they say, no, you gotta go to court. We don't know. We're in the vacuum.
So that should be a separate meeting to evaluate the legislator. It should.
They're presuming that you're not gonna have to go.
Chris, they're built into all the time for the benefit.
So when is the next meeting?
Well, I think it's gonna be September, what, twenty-fourth or something?
That's the next group meeting, but they want the three subcommittees.
It's gonna be two or three times before then.
Yeah, rewrite the sections. Now, there's nobody in charge of any of these.
No.
So I was saying to Angus, these would have to get posted, so you don't file their own meeting log. But nobody's doing that. It's, it's kind of messy.
It is messy.
I, I just. I was astounded that they want to move forward with it in this fashion. I still don't understand it. I wouldn't have so good. No, again. I greatly, really appreciated the mayor Havel stating it so clearly and boldly, because.
Now you know what you're.
Yeah, there's no game there. She's, and she has the right to state it, I mean, too, so. It seemed to be lost in this committee, though.
I think it's a great reason why you have to go over the legislature first statement.
Right, that's unfortunate.
I did actually, uh. Once, I, the first like three or four minutes, I wasn't totally. Owned in, but once after that, I started, I could just everything, pretty much everything ever have said. So I did take pretty much notes of what I can, everything ever have said. So I'm happy to, to chat this around on official meeting minutes, but I'll give you a pretty good flavor of.
The what Chris was trying to get at.
I mean, it's weird when you're sitting there and they're all on a screen and you're saying something, and there's nothing, there's no comment, no response, and. Nobody's got a follow-up or, at least call me an idiot. I mean, you know.
I, I did suggest and, and everyone agreed that for this meeting in September, we are gonna be in person, cause I, I, I felt it was a little stunted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stunted, stunted, I'm not sure.
Alright, I am C federal awards.
That's actually was included in error. That was a carrier with the last agenda. We're, we're not ready for that one.
Alright.
So you're gonna expect to see that later this summer.
Right, we'll move on to item D then, review of active projects.
Well, can I go back to the other one? The, the Woodya thing. In all the subcommittees, there's nobody from Havel in any of those either.
I hadn't noticed that.
Which that, like, that's a hollow group of subcommittees when the town who controls the whole thing is not even involved.
What is, she, mayor wants to be included in meetings of each subcommittee.
Yeah, she wants to be known. Nobody from Havel is a member of any of the subcommittees. That tells you the.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I guess what they're saying is we're not gonna contribute to something we know we're not gonna.
At least get on the committee and disrupt it if you're gonna do something.
But she also didn't press, she'd be communicating to Havel.
Yeah, she's the only one that, well, at least when I was doing it, when it came to meetings. He shows that how many people from our council are here.
So the school.
There was another person from Havel.
Yeah, there was someone else from Havel there.
I think that's her assistant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's Saint Reg.
But either way, just, again, I don't know how that works anyways, almost.
Alright, so item D, I asked Angus to put this on because, um. I feel like we need to make, you know, we have our priority meeting July twenty-fifth, but between now and then, I think we need to give Angus and staff some breathing room. And, you know, kind of identify which projects will be focused on and everything else needs to wait. So.
Point you should already give me, but go ahead.
I mean, my first thought is anything that's not vital or status sensitive, it needs to be put on the back burner until we get through this next month. So I don't know if you have a better way to approach it, Angus, but, I mean.
I, I agree with what you're saying, uh, you know, like what, what we talked about late last week, there's some things that come up every single day that. Uh, you know, don't necessarily warrant the time they get, but need the time, because that's part of town hall, um, you know. Like the, the movie night, you know, just, there's a hundred examples, so. But I think the spirit of what you're saying is definitely important, because part of, part of the challenge. We've had for a long time and, you know, feels like we go two steps forward, one step back, but not because of. Anything we're doing, just because of the world around us and, and all the, all the hurt balls we're throwing. It is, uh. In order for me to give, you know, clear direction to senior staff as to what they should prioritize. I need to, I need to have a good sense of what your priorities are. Uh, and I think July twenty-fifth, you know, I think we've got things keyed up pretty well to have a really informed discussion of that. But, you know, right now, we're, you know, we're just, uh, you know, every, every day we're drowning. And, and a, a lot of the senior staff that I rely on to help me move forward, some of the bigger projects are themselves, you know, buried in. You know, their day to day. I mean, finance, especially with the fiscal year, it, it's just. Uh, I mean, one example, you know, we saw it tonight with the Black and Bargain, like, I'd love to have the town account part of every session. I don't do that. She just doesn't have the time. If she did, the high value, she's got a lot to offer, but there's just not the time, so, um.
And so how, how long does that end of fiscal year process take? Is that all July?
Yes, honestly, until the audits closed out mid-September. I mean, that doesn't mean, you know, like. We got the OPAP actuarial, like, there, there's so much that goes into audit. I, basically the three months leading up to audit is. You know, that, now, you know, Jenny's helpful every time I ask her for something, but I am selective on what I ask her. Because I know that, you know. Um, you know, she's working long hours every single day if I don't ask her to do anything. So every single. It's like, uh.
I'm gonna appreciate it when you find it out, because she has to use her vacation time.
Right.
It's gonna expire.
Yeah, that's true, awesome, yeah.
So, so then what would be most helpful to you in that terms?
Well, I think, I think the twenty-fifth, you know, I think we all need to really just, you know, this, this list I put in here, definitely if there's things. In your minds that are not, you know, I, I've made a, you know, an effort to try to keep this thing current, even as recently as. You know, Fridays, when I was putting this together, I put together, anything that has a date of six twenty-eight means there was some change that I made on Friday. That may have been something new I added. It may have been something that I, I tweaked the language or provided a little better update, but I'm really trying to keep this kind of. As current as I can. So if you have things in your mind, either. If you as a board member or with committees that you're, you're liaison to, that you think are, need to be part of the discussion. Make sure to let me know before the twenty-fifth. That doesn't mean new things can't be added that day, but I just think the more prepared everyone is. Going in, so we can make, you know, some, uh, you know, realistic, uh. You know, have a realistic discussion. And I think things that are, uh, you know, there's plenty of things that we're working on that. We might not favor, but we have to do them.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, right now, this, you know, little, little thing, but like this PFAS class action litigation, I'm not personally putting time on. But Rebecca's putting in hours on it. And she's getting data from water and from health. And even today, I was, you know, I saw the AP warrant. Go through and there were three invoices for PFAS testing, so I flagged them just to make sure those get uploaded, you know. It's those little things, like some of the stuff that like, you might not think takes time. It, it all takes time. And some of the things that you might think are. Really being led by other departments, such as some of these contracts and some of these scopes of work, I'm. I'm pretty hands-on with that stuff, uh, cause we, you know, for a lot, and, uh, that all takes, it all takes time, so, um.
Hey, remember if I could just take a side step, cause you mentioned PFAS litigation.
Yeah.
Class action.
Yeah.
litigation. Um, is there any concern or any reason to think that, I know there was just a Supreme Court. Um, case that. No, 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 this allowed the, um, opioid supplement, um. Not, this was.
Purdue Pharma.
This was Purdue Pharma, but, but. Yeah, but, but I heard some suggestion that it might have much wider range implications to other class action settlements. So. Is that, um, I, I know nothing about it.
The reason was the Supreme Court said you can't have, uh, it absolved the families of any, um, personal liabilities and criminal activities. They didn't think that was appropriate, so they kicked it back.
I just wondered if it's worth a, a question to, uh, to K P.
Right now, we, we have till July twelfth to finish producing all our documents.
Yeah, okay.
We have all the documents. It's been a technical glitch with the website that it keeps kicking it back and giving. Error messages and she's been on the phone with them and it's, it's, but I, that, maybe that's a bad example, but there's, there's, uh.
I, I, I'm not trying to derail.
No, it doesn't matter at all, um. Yeah, I don't know about that, so that's, that's, um.
Now, Wendy said to keep the important and the vital, but that's thirty percent of the.
No, vital, not important.
Oh, I thought you said, okay.
Anything vital over the deadline, you know.
Yeah, between now and the twenty-fifth, I, I agree, that's a good, good way to focus it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, so I, I also suggested to Angus that we hold off on like the pickle feasibility study, which is very. But it's not essential.
Everybody dies with all this crap money, too.
Yeah, I, I think with, especially with some of the fiscal year on things you, you heard about earlier that you've known, you know, all along. We need to kind of, like, there've been other things shoved aside to hit, to make those deadlines happen, and we did, we got everything done. But I think we need to kind of, just at a staff level, kind of take a deep breath, like we have our, our planning and, uh, land management working group meeting Wednesday morning. You know, I'd like to be able to come into that, uh, which I try to do and, and kind of give the group like. You know, these are our main focuses. So right now, we're, we've got a new conservation agent who's gonna be on board and it's gonna start, you know. Thankfully, three weeks from today and, and a week after that, we'll have a new support position. You know, there's things that. Just like to have that go well and have that, those staff integrated properly with the right. Background information and server access. There's, there's a lot of things that we just need to be focused on, some of these just. Operational things and not, not just stay at the red line. Um, you know, for the next six months, cause we know fall town meeting, we know spring town. I mean, another, one thing I mentioned to Wendy the other day, like. Normally July is when I would start the capital planning process with, with seat with department heads, like here's your list, review, you know, and. There's a reason it's not till like October, November, that we send that around more broadly. It's because it takes that long to work with staff to get it to where it's good. So these are all things that if we're at the red line. It's just, it's just all gonna back up and, and it's not gonna be helpful. We need to just like focus on what we have to do, cause there's so much we have to do. And, uh, it does not unfortunately leave a lot of room for the things we want to do, um.
So could the direction from the board be to. Finish up all the things that have been pushed aside and just take a pause on any new projects or, I mean.
We could, I mean, you know, um, I think it's, it's not, it's not totally realistic, just because there's things that come up, like just, you know. Red Hill Terrace, which is like, gotta figure out, um, um.
But those, those are dictated by town operations, but something that a committee wants to do, that to me is something that needs to wait.
Yeah, I think those are the things that are within the board's, uh, control. Um, cause the way, the way it's kind of supposed to work, and it really, it never has worked this way exactly here in West Newbury. Because it's, it's a form of government issue, but, uh, you know, the way it worked in my last job is, is the, the council set my work plan. I set the staff work plan. So staff were not authorized to work on things unless I. Told them to work on the things. And it was right in the town charter that it was actually a prohibition on like people going around a manager to dictate the staff. That is the whole, you know, it's a whole chain of command. That's not how it works here. It's not gonna be exactly how it works here. You know, at least for those departments that are under independent, uh, you know, oversight authority. Um, but I think that, and, and it sounds very draconian when I describe it that way, and it really wasn't that way. It was more just, it, it, the, the spirit of it was that. You know, I worked for a council, not seven counselors and, and here. You know, I worked for a council, not seven counselors, and, and here we don't have. Seven board members, but we have thirty committees, so, you know, just for example, we're. You know, we have staff that are under pressure from a chair of, uh, you know, a committee that I won't name to, to adopt a policy that is staff, well, none of us think is actually. A problem, but the person's in the office. Not infrequently pressing the issue, and it's like. There's a point at which it's like easier to just do it. And. Than to get into the politics of it, but it's like an utter distraction. And those are the things that are really difficult, because.
Well, those are the things that I think should.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah.
So I was, I was looking to give you some coverage to say from the select board, no new initiatives.
Yeah.
Set, but so I don't know if you, Chris, and Rick are already giving it in that.
Well, I, I, I think that's fine, but I, I, as Angus noted, well, maybe he didn't say this, but I, I looked at some things you have going on. That are listed as important, not vital, and, you know, the M O U with the middle, with the report Middle Street Bridge is shown as important.
Um, that's the one I thought, too, was.
Um, yeah.
Oh, it is vital, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, so, I mean, where is, is replace phone systems? Is that still important, or now that you've gone so far down the road, is it now vital? I mean, or, or can you put a pause on that? I mean, it says here, replace phone system's important, but you're not going, so. Uh, is, is that something that you really can put a pause on? If you can, that's fine. I don't.
Now, we really, we, we really can't.
Yeah.
No, not one, no.
I think there shouldn't be to put anything that's optional on hold and let Angus sort out the vitals and the importance.
Yeah, sure.
At your priority level, cause what's, what's the difference there? But also. We started talking about the hunting and the dog thing a few weeks ago. I said, let's not take anything, put it on the list, but it's like. Dreamland at that point, till you can dig out from some of this. Um.
Yeah, I think we have to stick to that, though, um.
I mean, another one, they weren't even the, uh, the farming bylaw. That's another one to me, it's. That can wait. That's a year or two down the road. Nobody gets hurt, no grants are lost, and. Citizens are gonna be a little disappointed.
They could, if the citizens petition, then it wouldn't be. I mean, we're not doing any work on that, so.
I did a lot of markups on it, obviously, and you could, I'm sure that went somewhere.
Yeah.
Really far, huh?
Yeah.
That's fine, fine by me, but they're gonna need some.
Yeah, all right, anyway. All right, well, let's, I mean, so I guess for us, we need to start thinking about this list and how we wanna use the meeting on the twenty fifth to actually. Try to make some changes here.
And who we, at that meeting, make suggestions of things that maybe should be categorized?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, already know.
Yeah, I mean, like I see Emerald Ash Board treatments.
Or, I don't, you know.
It's not a high level of importance, right?
It, one, one of the things that kind of, I feel like sometimes boxes, boxes me in is when, when there are statements made in public meetings that are commitments that. Okay, we're gonna expend the money to treat all the trees, and then we're gonna track how they do. It kind of implicates that we're going to do that. And so we really have to do that, because it was said in a public meeting that we're gonna do that, so I'm, then I go to staff the next day or the next week or whatever, I have time to catch up with them, say. Okay, we now have to, it's not enough to just treat the trees. We now have to have, like. You know, analysis of the success rate, which I don't disagree with the objective, but, but don't pretend that doesn't take time. That's, that's the thing, is all these statements, oh, we should do this, we should. Okay, I guess we'll just do that, and, and then it's like. Friday at twelve thirty at night, I'm finally getting to my comments for the hazard mitigation plan, which have been on my personal to do list for. Five weeks, and the only reason I got to it Friday night was because. That was the absolute drop dead date to get the comments in. So it's just, it's, you know, there's just not enough time to do our, to do. It's, 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 and no one, you know, I know you guys get, no one wants to hear that, but that's been the same. Situation it's been for years.
Nobody wants to hear it, but people have to hear it. That's the problem, you know, because you get people coming in complaining, oh, the. The crew dug up my grass when they mowed the, when they plowed, it's gotta get, that's ridiculous, what level of stuff you got here. So, yeah, people do have to realize, you're not sitting on your hands all day in the office doing nothing. And maybe if they saw this list and. Again, don't ever, you cross off stuff, don't ever delete it from list, keep the list of completed, because.
Yeah. Right.
There's, there's a lot there that's already been done, and once it's done, they sort of forget it.
Right.
You know, uh, and those are big projects that have been completed, so. Uh. Yeah, I mean, I, I.
You know, part of my job is to keep staff on task and keep staff focused, so there has to be enough slack in my schedule. To really be hands-on with different departments. I think I do a good job with some and others on more hands-off and, and just because of, of time. But I think that's, that's something that I think, uh, because of the structure and it's small town, we all wear a lot of hats. You know, I, I think sometimes even when I feel like I've had, wow, I'm so productive, I have so much done this week. I think of like, jeez, did I really, like, check in with my department heads much this week, you know, but for the organization to work best. And for this, for the efforts of staff to best reflect the organization's priorities, it does rely on a certain amount of. You know. I wouldn't say slack or downtime, I did say slack, but, but it's not that, it's, it's really like. Kind of, uh, coordination or, or oversight or, uh. Uh, even like, uh, mentoring sometimes, um. That, you know, that takes time, that there's not a direct tangible work product that's really important, if you don't do it, like, and I, I, that's. I'm really talking to myself more than anything, cause that can, that's, sometimes I can fall into that tendency if I just, like. Change in my desk, like, churning out work, and I am, I've lost the show for the hours I worked, but. But maybe I'm forgetting about, like, different departments that really could benefit from more. Hands-on engagement. You know, I do, I do try to have a good balance there, but it's just, there's so much, and there's, there's some, I think about it, like, there's some. Department heads that I talk with daily, some weekly, there's others that I'm really not hung with that often. Uh, or maybe I'm seeing them for pleasantries, but I'm really not engaged with what they're doing. That probably means they're doing a really good job, cause I don't need to, but, but like. You think of good managers you've had, like, they're, you know, you want them to be engaged, and there's just, there's only so much, uh, there, there's not all the breathing like to. To do all of that.
So as we're considering this list in preparation for the meeting, I mean, what would you like us? I mean, what would you like to get from us?
Well, I think it would be good to, for the thing, I think, you know, you, you said, whatever, whichever of you said, Chris, I think said of like. To really, really look closely at, like, when I say vital, what does it mean? Because I think I've had different iterations of this, and, uh. What I, I might look at mandated. Is one word. That's different than vital, like a mandated function we have to do, cause there's some grant or some law that says we have to do it. Uh. That's different than, you know, like finding another water source. I put it vital, and I think we would all agree it's vital, but it's not actually. But, and I'm not for a second suggesting we pause that, I think we.
Well, but it's not scheduled, you know?
No, it's not.
I mean, it. It's waiting for fifteen year or twenty years, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
By thirty.
Yeah, so I think that, that schedule component needs to be built in somehow.
Yeah, yeah, I think the, the schedule component could be fleshed out, and the next steps could be fleshed out, like, much more. Detail, because there are certain things that, that we, we hit some milestones, uh. With the end of the fiscal year, we'll hit some more. And I think ideally we can see some of these dropping off the, off the table to, to create, uh, create some. You know, some bandwidth.
Okay, so this list will not change much between now and twenty fifth, right?
I don't, I don't think much, no.
Probably not at all.
No, but I think coming out of that, if we can, if we can kind of retool. Something that we all can embrace and really use as a. As like our, uh. You know. Marching orders, uh.
Okay.
So the meeting on the twenty fifth starts at four o'clock.
Yes.
Okay, and we, we need a full six hours before we have to go.
Any, any sense? On how long would it take?
Oh, a meeting length? I'm not six.
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
I was saying two. I'm afraid. That's my.
I think three or four, but let's say.
Okay.
I, I don't know, I mean.
That's why I would try to like to frame it beforehand, so that'd be most efficient.
Right, right.
Maybe on the eighteenth, we can kind of check in about this and see where we're at.
Yeah, good, yeah, and then, you know, we talked about this, uh, that one of the follow-ups to that, I think would be to get the chairs together. To basically share, the, this is, this is the unified work program and, uh. And if, if you have programs that aren't reflected here. You know, don't expect much staff support. I don't wanna ever be, stand in the way of. People with their own initiative, but to the extent it's, it's calling on staff involvement, it's, I have to be guarded with that time, because there's not enough to be. For everything.
That's what I was wondering on your list, a number of those things, would a certain department deal with it and not even be on your plate?
Depends on, depends on the issue.
Right, we'll go through those at the meeting and.
Yeah.
Or I was just, to go back to Emerald Ash Board. It's, some regards, isn't the precommittee the advocate, and they should be. Formulating some rationale behind, you know, what we spent, what we worked, what didn't work. That's, that's what I would.
Mm-hmm.
I think maybe the. You, you, you know, it, it is possible that there might be some work that can come out of committees, too.
Yeah.
And maybe the, maybe the committees sometimes remark to the staff. Something they're thinking about. But it's not clear who's gonna actually pick up the work, then, then probably goes on.
By the way, too, staff shouldn't be taking directions from committees.
Absolutely, yeah.
No, they're saying, but they sit, they sit there and engage in dialogue.
It's like talking to us.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
Isn't that how it happens sometimes? They, they engage in dialogue?
Yeah.
And then they, you know, if, if someone on a committee has a good idea. This, the nature of this town is, that's a good idea, we should do that.
They gotta put it right, and they get.
Is that what you're kind of, hey, is that what kind of what you're talking about a little bit?
That, that doesn't, that's not what I'm.
Okay, okay.
That's actually, because that.
Okay, no, fine, no, it's just, okay, but on the Emerald Ash, I think that's an example of the precommittee should have some knowledge about.
Yeah.
The program.
That's not how it's, it's rolling out. It's, it's rolling back to town staff.
Right.
That's not the impression I'm having.
And the, is this issue there scheduling of treatment, or is this issue like monitoring and reporting on survival of treatment?
Wendy all want that, though, knocking on that.
Yeah, I mean.
We don't, we wanna go down that road right now.
Probably not, yeah.
Yeah.
Go that road.
But, but those are related. Everything you mentioned is kind of related to schedule treatments. You gotta know what, what.
I think we have to be more, for town meeting, we have to be more cautious about. Projects.
Yes.
So many, we have so many warrants that necessitate town staff.
Stay in, stay in.
All right, please remind me.
I know.
The warrant.
I know. I'll text you.
Yes.
Motion adjourned.
Actually, um, I, I have, uh, just something I want to ask about, um. And, and this is not a near-term project, but it's, it's something I just wonder about. Um. C Z M, you know, Coastal Zone Management is a federal. Designated program, or, you know, the, the, the region covered by C Z M is, is, was designated through federal legislation.
Mm-hmm.
We're not within that range. Title Rivers in general, I think, are not. Within the range what's, that's covered by that. And at some point, should we talk, and, and this might be a non-starter, might never, ever go anywhere. But should we at some point in the future talk with our. Our federal legislators, you know, um, Bolton and Markey and, and Warren. And find out if it's possible for. Um, you know, in our case, what's relevant is the Merrimack River, cause there is funding available. To fix things along the coast. There isn't that same, through C D M, that same set of funding, which is a pretty large chunk of funding, is not available to us.
Right, is that, is that administered from the state level up?
It is, but, but, but the designation of the area is covered as a federal.
I, I, I understand.
Yeah.
But I would just add that you may have someone at the state level that can help with that.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I mean, they, they definitely, we would want them as part of the conversation, but ultimately, they're not the ones.
Yeah, I.
Who would be involved with changing.
But they may be advocating for the same.
So, so, and. I'm not saying we should add that to our list right now, I mean, in light of the conversation we're having, but I.
This is a good idea.
To, to throw that out as something, you know, for the future for us to think about.
Yeah, this is how I have. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Second motion, please, second, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Just set a record.
He did, he, there he said a record.
I, I don't think, we, we have.
Oh, okay. Well, well done. So you're picking me up and going back and through there, Chris?
No, no.
Really? Yeah. Really, good. Chris, you have a minute?